All right, we're going to go ahead and call the school board meeting to order, and we'll start off with a pledge of allegiance. Okay. Secretary will note the role, we have everybody here tonight, that's great. And I will just mention now that we had an executive session prior to the meeting. So with that, so with that, I will now see, do we have any comments, public comments, that you've received?
No.
No papers?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so now we'll just throw it open, is anybody out there have a burning desire to talk to the board prior to the start of the meeting?
Even if it's not burning.
Or, yeah, if it's not burning, we're not particular. No, all right, very well then, we'll just go right ahead into our recognition and awards.
Okay, moving on to number four, presentations, recognitions, and awards. At this time, I'd like to call Dr. Williams up, along with our Lower Pots Grove Elementary students, to present how the PTA collectively enhances our school experience for our students. Dr. Williams.
Thank you. Thank you, good evening. For my last school board presentation, I really wanted to honor our PTA. This is a hard-working group of volunteers that spend countless hours helping and supporting our students. How do they support our students? They promote school connectedness, they create an atmosphere for students to want to come to school, and our student leaders will share some of those experiences. Also, they promote literacy, they enhance community relations, they provide equity of resources for our students, and they support the building of morale in our building. So, I have called on our student leaders to share the student perspective. I only gave them topics, and then they provided the details. Student leaders?
Hi, my name is Kelsey, and we are some of the student leaders of Lower Pots Grove Elementary School. And have you ever wondered how fundraisers, parties, yearbooks, and assemblies happen in our school? Well, all of that is here because of our PTA.
Hi, my name is Lindsay. The PTA is a group of parents and teachers that help with special activities. Without the PTA, there would be fewer engaging activities and bonding in our school.
Hi, my name is Alexis. I will be talking about the fifth grade pool party. The PTA gets the food and plans the pool party. We get to hang out with the whole fifth grade. Also, shirts. The PTA provides us with Field Day shirts, Reading Olympics shirts, and Student Leader shirts.
Hi, my name is Chantel. I will be sharing information about book fair and book swap. Book fair is where we can buy new books. The PTA helps with this because they help you find your books, and they also donate books to the library and classrooms. Then book swap. Book swap is where you can swap new books. How the PTA helps is they take time and effort out of their day to set up the tables by color order. They are so amazing and I'm glad.
Hi, my name is Hannah, and my partner Gracie and I worked on this piece together. Our piece is about field trips, and how the PTA supports them. Field trips give kids the opportunity to learn and explore the world. The PTA helps fund transportation as needed. They also help shepherd around the field trips. They help make sure kids are safe, fed, and accounted for. Without the PTA, we won't have as many fun or memorable field trips. Another thing I'm going to talk about is Grandparents' Day. Grandparents' Day is a time for grandparents to see what their grandchildren are learning, and to spend some time with them. The PTA helps sign at grandparents' Day, and they can feel like part of our community.
Hi, my name is Izzy Zizikyo. Our PTA supports our education in school by either assisting or planning fun activities. One way they did this was by making fall and winter parties. Fall and winter parties are when we work on crafts and eat special snacks. The PTA also assists and welcomes parent volunteers, so they could do fun activities with us in class. As you know, in LPEES, we celebrate American Education Week. And this week, the PTA assists with parents coming in, and they welcome them to our school.
Hi, my name is Natalie, and I'm going to speak about Teacher Appreciation Week. The PTA supports Teacher Appreciation Week. Some of the things they provide are food, snacks, and homemade crafts for each of the teachers. This makes the teachers feel appreciated and loved.
Today, I'm going to be talking about the fundraisers. The fundraisers for this school are all because of the PTA. Some of the fundraisers are Yankee candles, girthier chocolate, wrapping paper, square one art, kid stuff, friendlies, and the holiday workshop. The PTA spends time, money, and effort into helping our school. Without fundraisers, we wouldn't have the supplies we need.
This evening, I'm going to talk about yearbooks. Most people won't remember what you looked like in the past years, and who was in your class without a yearbook. Do you know who makes the yearbooks? The PTA. The PTA makes a ton of copies of yearbooks for us every year. Just imagine not ever getting a yearbook. Without the PTA, we wouldn't.
Hi, my name is Ava. This evening, I will be talking about some ways the PTA helps us. One way is they provide money to include all assemblies, including the African music assembly. They do this so we can learn about different cultures, and how other countries make or play music. They also pay for and organize someone's special dance. They do this so you can spend time with the people you love, and you can cherish your moments together.
Hi, my name is Caitlin, and some other ways the PTA helps is they help plan for movie night. Movie night is when the PTA provides a movie for you to bring your family to see. It's fun if they volunteer to pay for the film. It's going to give the family a chance to have some fun. Movie night is really fun, and we're glad the PTA has helped to plan for it.
Hi, my name is Emily, and I am here to talk to you about Field Day. Field Day is a day where we can choose six activities in each field. There are three fields. The PTA orders the shirts and makes sure everyone gets one. The shirts are a good memory because we get to sign them at the end of the year. Towards the end of the day, everyone gets a delicious popsicle. Field Day is a good way to have fun, but still be safe and positive. Field Day is a good memory to have.
Now, take a minute and think, would our schools really be as fulfilling without our PTA?
The PTA of our schools help a lot. We should thank them for all they do.
Thank you, PTA!
Thank you, student leaders, if you would like to step down. We do have some PTA members in our audience, and I have a surprise one here from last year or two, and Gladys is here as well. So, we have Mrs. Coombs, if you could stand and come forward, Mrs. Schumaker, Mrs. Lucas, Mrs. McMaro, Mrs. Nyheart, Mrs. Petrie, is Mr. Figgins here? And our former president, Mrs. Spott. So, what women like to do is typically, we give teachers an apple, but because you make schools so sweet, we're going to give you a candy apple. Thank you so much, students.
Thanks, Dr. Williams, appreciate that. The next part of our program, I'd like to recognize one of our own. I don't know if we would classify this person as sweet, but... But, I do think that what he does for our district, and the skills that he offers are really second to none. And I'm going to read the first part of it, the first part of this recognition for Mr. Nestor, because I think the words are important, and then I'll get, I'll step around and get a little more personal with my own words, I think that's better said. But, this certificate is and will be presented to certify that David Al Nestor has duly qualified under the standards prescribed, and having fulfilled all the personal, ethical, and professional requirements as established by the Pennsylvania Association of School Business Officials, and we hereby recognize as a certified member of the School of Business Administrators. It's quite an accomplishment, it's extra hours of professional development, to not only to certify his skills, and to also make sure that the district is run, you know, in a way that it provides stewardship, really, for the district. Dave is a steward of the district, and I say this with complete confidence, he treats our money, your money, like it's his own, and along with his staff, Mr. Linky's here tonight, they do an excellent job of managing and thinking of our future, because that's really, things, you know, well, you know, a lot of young children in the audience tonight, a lot of young families. But, this process for us goes on five and 10 years down the road. It's not something that we think about the budget on a yearly basis. The decisions we make are really with future vision at stake, and future stakeholders in mind. So, Dave, if you come up, I'd like to present you with this word.
So, I think that one of the ways you can tell the health of a community is the spirit of volunteerism, and the spirit of going above and beyond the minimum requirements, and this certification represents part of that. But, I'd also like to thank especially the PTA, and all the work that you do, because it's that spirit, that coming in and being with your children, and helping at the district, and contributing time and effort. I know all those committees, and keeping track of the budget, and keeping track of the fundraiser, and organizing all the things that have to be done, takes an inordinate amount of time. Is anybody here do the book fair? Okay, the book fair, my wife did that for six, seven years, and I know how much work goes into that, and all of the committees and all of the things are just like that. So, thank you both, thank you, Mr. Nestor, for all of your work, your extra work to get that certification, and thank you to the PTA for all the work that you do. And I will say that Lower Pots Grove has really raised the bar for the PTA snacks, you know, for the board. I thought that Ringing Rocks had it when we were there, but I don't know, this is really competitive, this is really, really a contender. But, thank you all for all of your participation, all of your work, and all the things that you give back to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Linken. Moving on to the approval of the minutes, 5.1, we're asking for board approval.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve five, approval of minutes, which includes October 9th minutes and October 23rd minutes.
We have a motion and a second, are there any questions or comments on the minutes, the two meetings? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Sword without objection.
I move that we accept the high school accounts, middle school accounts, and cafeteria accounts as presented.
We have a motion and a second, are there any questions or comments on the accounts? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Sword without objection.
I move that we approve the payments of invoices in the amount of $4,713,352.32 for October 2018 as presented.
We have a motion and a second, are there any questions on this item?
Just a question regarding a payment to the fire police. My question isn't around the amount of the payment, but it stated it was to the borough of Pottstown. Just curious why it went to the borough, and not one of the local townships. I would presume the townships provided the fire police support. And also, it did go to the borough, the fire police are volunteer. Just curious about that process, and it would be nice to see that any payment, I'm presuming it was a donation, went to the fire police for their equipment and that sort of thing. Do we have any information on that?
Mr. Parker, I'll have to look into that, it's very possible, and I don't want to say this unequivocally, but I know our cross-country team does a Toss Your Turkey 5K on Thanksgiving Day, and they have to pay the Pottstown Fire Police to shut down the roads for that. Yes.
Are there any other questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Sword without objection.
I move that we approve the treasurer's report for October 2018 and presented, and file it for audit.
Second. We have a motion and a second on the treasurer's report. Does anybody have any questions on the treasurer's report? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Sword without objection. Now, we get to...
Okay, I'd like to turn the mic over now to Savannah and Brenna with an update from the students, thank you.
For this week, on October 25th, we went to the middle school to talk to about 10 students about just their school in general, and we asked, what does Pots Grove do great? What can Pots Grove do better? What can you dream Pots Grove can be? And how can each student personally help to make Pots Grove a better place? For what Pots Grove can do great, we received a bunch of different answers, like how good the music program is, which is, comes from every single school, so props to the music program. How nice is that we offer so many different classes for so many different students? How it's a great place to make friends, and how much they love that we offer all kinds of different activities with people, for people with different interests, between music and sports, and just other extracurricular activities. When we asked what Pots Grove can do better, as always, the students have a bunch of things that they think could make the school better. One of their suggestions was for the school to offer like a support group for the middle schoolers, led by counselors, where kids can talk about whatever they're going through with people who are ready and willing to listen, and even with other students around that might be going through the same thing, so a safe place for them to just sit and talk, and not necessarily feel pressured to talk either. So, they would come to the counselors for that. They also suggested adding more advanced classes to what the middle school currently offers, including some type of government class, because some of the kids didn't think that they learned enough about how our government works, and what it does, and all that type of stuff. And they also had strong opinions on the language arts curriculum, insisting that it was repetitive, and that they would like to see some more variety.
They also mentioned that they feel the dress code is not enforced equally between the middle school and high school students. They expressed a desire to, quote, "learn more real-world skills," and are very open to finding better ways to communicate with their administrators to share their opinion on school policies, and discuss the possibility of more lenient rules. They also wish to sit where they choose at lunch, and be able to use their cellphones during lunch in ninth period. When asked what they dream Pots Grove can be, the students agreed that they want all students to feel safe and comfortable, and to be able to learn a lot while surrounded by good friends. The final question, how can you make Pots Grove better, was answered with statements like, may people smile, be a good example, follow the rules, and pick up trash at lunch.
And just a few last-minute things, a lot of the kids at the high school level loved what Dr. Ziegler did with the Halloween thing, with dressing up at school, and I was at Ringing Rocks too on Halloween, and the kids had a blast with their parties and parades that they did, and absolutely loved it, so it was really nice to see.
Just a quick question, after you got all that feedback back, did you give that feedback to Mr. Boyer, so we can actually see if any of that can be actually worked on?
We sent our report to Mr. Durenzo, and Mr. Durenzo forwarded it to Mr. Boyer.
Okay, thank you. Thank you both for that report, appreciate it. Moving on to discussion items, Mr. Nestor, I hope if I turn it over to you, and you can introduce your guests tonight, as they come forward and talk to us regarding our audit report.
We've been working with Herbine &amp; Company for several years now as our local auditors. This year, we're going to have Megan Thompson, who was the audit manager on the job, speak to you about the results for the 2018, 1718 school year.
Thank you. Thank you for taking time for us tonight. In front of you, you have a hard copy of the audit report, and you also have a skinnier report that looks like this. This is the one we're going to focus on. It's a summary of the 100-page financial statement report. If you flip open to page two, it just gives you an overview of what I'm going to talk about, and we're going to go over the audit reports for 2018. We're going to talk about a new standard that was implemented this year for the district. We'll go over some highlights and trends in your financial results for the 1718 year, and then we'll talk a little bit about the federal awards, since we do do an audit of the federal programs. On page three, this is just a reminder that we do audit under three different standards. So, we audit under generally accepted auditing standards, which is our audit of your financial statement. We also do an audit under governmental auditing standards, that's where we look at the internal control over financial reporting and compliance. And then we also audit under uniform grant guidance, which is the audit of your federal expenditures. And we always like to remind you that our responsibility is to issue an opinion on the financial statements that are prepared by management with your oversight. If you flip to page four, you'll see that we had unmodified audit opinions on both the financial statement audit and the federal awards audit, which we call the single audit. Unmodified opinions are clean audit opinions, it means we found no material adjustments to the records that management provided to us, so that's a good thing. Page five highlights a new accounting standard that was implemented during 1718 for the district. It relates to other post-employment benefits, which are basically, it's pretty much your health care for retirees. Prior to this standard, that liability always existed, it just wasn't shown on your government-wide statements as a full liability. So, this puts the liability on the statement, so you are going to see about $7.5 million in OPEB liabilities on your statement of net position. It doesn't change anything for the district, you're no worse off than you were before. The liabilities are funded through contributions to PISers, as well as the payment of insurance claims for your retirees, so it doesn't change anything for budgeting either. If you flip over to page six, it's titled Changes in Fund Balance. This is a summary of the activity for your general fund. On this slide, I'm going to focus on the top lines there, which are the revenue. So, you'll see the first yellow line is the total revenue. In the 2018 column, which is the middle column, the district had $65.2 million in revenue for the general fund, compared to the budget of $64.6 million. So, you were within 1% of budgeted revenues. Some favorable variances under local revenue mostly relate to your interest income exceeding budget, which is what we're seeing across the board. If we didn't see that, we would question it. Your state revenue also had a favorable variance above budget, that mostly relates to your state subsidies for retirement and social security. The aid ratio went up this year, and so that's built into your 1819 budget. Page seven shows a breakdown of the expenditures in the general fund in the same format. So, I'm going to take you all the way to the bottom line that says total expenditures. So, in the general fund for 2018, we had $64.3 million in expenditures, which was under the budget of $65.5 million. So, it was a 1.8% variance in budget, almost entirely related to salaries and benefits, still very close to what's budgeted. The salaries and benefits is so fluid, as you have open positions during the year, as you have turnover and positions being replaced at either higher or lower salaries, to be within 2% is what we would consider to be very close to budget there. Page eight shows your governmental funds balance sheet, so this is your balance sheet for your general fund and your capital projects fund. I'm going to take you to the bottom that lists out the fund balances there. So, in the general fund, you ended the year with $15.3 million in fund balance. We had some amounts committed for future retirement payments as the PISers rate increases, for post-employment benefits, compensated absences, and vocational aid. The assigned fund balance there is the budgeted deficit for 1819. It may look higher than you're expecting, that's just because your budgetary reserve is in that number. And that brings your unassigned fund balance to $5.6 million, which is a little bit over 8% of your 1819 budgeted expenditures. The second column of numbers here is your capital projects fund. So, you'll see capital projects ended the year with $9.4 million in fund balance. As a reminder, there is a commitment out there for the middle school roof of $2.4 million, but the rest of the money there is available for future capital spending. The next page is kind of a condensed summary of those revenues and expenses that we just talked about. You'll see the third yellow line there says change in fund balance. This is your surplus or deficit for those funds for the 1718 year. So, you'll see the general fund had a surplus of $124,000, and your capital projects had a deficit of $129,000. These are reflective after the transfer of about $700,000 over to capital projects. Any questions on the general fund or capital projects fund? Okay. Then page 10 shows your change in net position for your food service fund, and here we're giving you a trend of the last three years, so the 2018 year end is your last column here. Again, I'll take you to the bottom, the second yellow line from the bottom says change in net position, that's your surplus or deficit for food service. So, you'll see a trend that that surplus has been increasing. It was a very good year for your food service fund, you had a surplus of $64,000. That brought your ending net position to $160,000, so just over about one month of your average operating expenses, so it is good to see that reserve, you know, creeping up a little bit, and to see your food service fund have some profitable years. Page 11 shows the activity in your internal service fund, which is your self-insurance fund. It was a positive year for your self-insurance fund, claims expenses were down compared to the past two years. So, you'll see in the 2018 column, the change in net position there is about a $1.5 million surplus. Page 12 shows your balance sheet for both your food service and your internal service fund. The only thing I want to point out here is in the internal service fund, you do have a net position of $5.7 million, but 4.6 million of that, the money is held at CPAS. It's held in the district's name, but it's not cash here, held by the district. And then page 13 shows you some trend analysis of that self-insurance fund, just to show you how volatile the claims expense can be. So, the graph on the left shows the total expenses for the fund broken down by medical, prescription, and dental, just to show you that the prescription... prescription, and dental, just to show you that the prescription really has fluctuated over the past five years. And then the graph on the right shows a similar trend analysis for the past five years. And you can see in 2016, when your prescription kind of spiked, and now heading into 2018, you were on a bit of a downward trend, which is why you saw the healthy surplus for that fund, to help build up reserves for future difficult years. As I mentioned at the beginning, the report is very long, so this, page 14, just shows what we consider some of the more important footnotes. If you're having trouble sleeping tonight and you want some light reading, you know, this is where we would suggest you go. Page 15 is a summary of your federal grants comparing 16-17 to 17-18. You'll see an increase in federal awards reflective of the title funding increasing. This year, we tested the special education cluster, which was your IDEA grant revenue. We had no findings, no noncompliance that we noted, no question costs, and that was about 31% of your total federal expenditure. So we rotate each year what program we're testing. And then the last slide is just a summary of the communication letter, which in the back of your packet, there are two letters. The communication letter is the thicker one. It's required communication that we have to give you. It basically says that we had no disagreements with management while we were performing the audit. We ran into no major issues. We don't have any concerns, and any adjustments that we did have as part of the audit were provided by your staff. It was nothing that we identified. The other skinnier letter is our management letter. It outlines some upcoming pronouncements, which we've already been in discussion with your management. They reach out to us to help implement those as they come up. Are there any questions on the audit?
I do have a couple of questions. There are probably more for Mr. Nestor, but on page three, I didn't realize there was a smaller audit. I would have been happy to look over it, but page three of the rather large audit, and the last line, you mentioned briefly about food services, and this says it increased 67%, basically $64,000. Just a question. Dave, can we get a little more understanding of that? And my curiosity is, is this based on, did we raise what we charge as students, and do we need to be charging as much as we are if we're seeing such an incredible increase?
Yes. Actually, I'm going to ask Mr. Linky to come up as well. We did not have a price increase in 17-18. We did get some additional subsidies as a result of being a slightly less wealthy district, and there was a number of other changes, but there wasn't anything that really stood out. Ron, do you want to chime in?
For the 17-18 school year, we implemented the school breakfast program at the high school. That was not there in 16-17. In 17-18, the high school started the breakfast program. They never had the breakfast program. So that brought in about $15,000 to $20,000 additional revenue that was never there before. At West Pott's Grove Elementary, we had the IU run a 3K counts program where we wound up catering for their food. That was additional revenue for the food service fund. Food costs dropped about 15 grand over the prior year, and the rebates on the foods actually went up five grand over the prior year. So Chartwell's has been, their procurement department's been digging in the heels and trying to get best deals for us.
Thank you. One more question, if I may. On page 13, the last paragraph. Transportation recognized an increase in costs of approximately $250,000 as compared to budget. And we've probably discussed this, but can you remind us what that is about, why it was such a large figure, unexpected?
Well, we had reduced it based on 15-16. When we do these budgets, the last actual we have is not the prior year, but two years prior. So in 17-18, we actually, there were a couple components. One, we had utilized more rental vehicles to do special education runs and/or athletic runs, things of that nature. There was a slight increase, but we had had a dip in transportation in the 15-16 year as compared to the 14-15 year. This is, a lot of this is just returning to where we had been prior.
In regards to the subsidies with the food contract, do you see that as being the new norm, or is this like an outlier just for this year?
PDE calculates the, what's called a severe need breakfast subsidy. It's based off of two years ago lunch participation on the free lunch program. Also, the federal subsidy has gone up. You know, the state hasn't increased the subsidy that we get from them, but the federal government has increased the rate of payment to us.
So, answer to your question, we would assume there's items to continue.
Would we be able to pass on some of that saving? No, it's not savings necessarily, but extra money coming in. Is there a way to then reduce the costs of some of the items at lunch? I know, I know some of the items.
We have to, the federal government requires that the paid lunch cost, the students who pay have to pay their fair share. So they will mandate a price increase, and we can't blame the government for more than 10 cents of a price increase. So the idea is to hold the lunch price consistent.
I think maybe I'm talking more about like à la carte items. I know that, you know, I think.
We can have that conversation with Chartwell's, because, you know, they're trying to recoup the cost of the items. Their procurement department is doing a pretty good job, and if it keeps going, we can probably ask them to take a look at that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to, I'd like to thank Megan and her team for another good year with the audit. They're pleasant, they're professional, they're efficient, and I think we work pretty well together, so it's a good match. So thank you very much, Megan, and your team.
Okay. Moving on to 10.2, as far as our discussion items tonight, we would like to discuss the addition of a third language at the high school. Just real quickly, you know, we've been working on this particular project for two years. We started the discussion back in 16-17, and then last year, the fall of 17, we put a survey out to our community in the elementary grades as well as student middle school about their thoughts of adding a third language to our curriculum. This then morphed into discussion, you know, in the spring of 18, as well as in the summer with our world language departments, and then, of course, into our curriculum and technology committee as well. And we, last month, had an opportunity to really talk more specifically about this and bring a recommendation to the board. So I wanted to give the committee an opportunity to share their thoughts on the third language and what it would mean to the district, and let the rest of the board sort of, you know, chime in, pick each other's brains, if you will, as far as this, adding this piece, and just really have an open discussion and dialogue. So, Mrs. Custer, obviously you're the chair. If you want to start with any particular comments or open it up to the floor.
I'll actually hand it over to Mr. Lappack. He is definitely, you're more the pro in this than I am, and this has been sort of your baby from day one, so have at it.
Thanks for the warning. Okay, we were one of five, four districts out of 45 within the region that actually only offered two languages. Everyone else offers three, some of as many as seven different languages, and that's one of the reasons why we're thought of that, you know, we're sort of the oddball out there that we really, if we were going to be competitive with other schools and bringing people into the area, we should really look at that. Some of the other districts were, Pottstown only had two, Norristown had two, Jenkentown, I think, had two, and there was one up towards Writing that had two. I don't remember. Antiochum?
Antiochum.
Yeah, okay. Of those ones that had two languages, half of them roughly, you know, actually three of them were, had Spanish and French. Two of them had Spanish and German. We're one of those that Spanish-German. So French, we're looking at the number of different languages that were recommended. Of 100% of the schools that were, of the 45, had Spanish. 93.3% had French. 80% had German. 42% had Latin. 17% had Mandarin, and then it went down from there from the ones that were recommended. And as one of the world language teachers said, it's going to be a lot easier to find a French teacher than it would be for Latin. So that's where we're leaning towards going with the French, so. There was a lot more beyond that, but it's really discussion that if anyone has questions or wants to bring up different things, there was a lot of research done to it and a lot of discussion time put into it as well over the couple of years, so.
The only thing I'd like to add with Jim in there is, like I said, the curriculum committee, Ashley knows, of course, how long this has been going on. We've always said that we want to be a district of choice, and we've said that so many different times I've heard that about different things and like that. To really be a district of choice, we have to have the options available for our students that other districts provide as well. As we said already, there's only four districts out of like 45 that only offer two. It is something I think that is not only necessary, but I think it is imperative that we actually add the option for our students to have the same opportunities as every other district in the area. We'll never be a district of choice if we aren't willing to invest. This is going to be an investment. There is no question about it. It will cost money. You will have to add teachers, time, effort, everything. It's an entire program that's going to have to be built. What was it about? Before Jim and I got on the board is when the time came out where they actually got rid of the French. And I would argue to say that may have been one of the choices that the board probably, in the past board would say, they feel horrible that they actually made that decision at the time. And it was a money decision, an understandably money decision, but at this time, we've done our due diligence on creating this program through the administration, through the world language, through the students, through the parents. We've gone through every phase, and we've taken this out for the entire two years to make sure this was done correctly, and I think it is time now that we actually offer that to our students.
One of the things I wanted to add on was, it was not just the addition of a third language, but then also to have an exploratory program. There was a lot of discussion on that. I mean, if we had endless amounts of money, it'd be great to start that at kindergarten. That may be a, you know, down-the-road type thing, but for right now, the thought is to start in the middle school so that it, we're waiting for the world language department to get back to us, but it seems like they're thinking about sixth and seventh grade to start doing some sort of exploratory so that they're, when they're going into eighth grade, they know definitely, I really want to study this. So they're working on that right now. Ideally, they're still thinking about a K to five program that, again, may take a long time too, but who knows, maybe somebody will donate a lot of money to the school, but that is part of the program as well, that was exploratory and the third language.
I'd like to say that I, while yes, it is, it is quite a bit of money, but it's an investment in our children's future. We've done a great job over the last three years that I've been on the board of keeping tax increases very low, and, you know, you never know, maybe there would be a way to start this and keep it going without having to really take a hard hit. And that would be something where we'd have to turn to Mr. Nestor and see what kind of creative accounting he can do. He has that certification now. He has that certification now, so we're going to, we're going to hold him to a higher standard. But I think it's something that we really need to consider, sending these kids out, especially in this day and age, with only having had two options. I just think it's a shame. And the fact that they don't even really, like, for instance, my daughter signed up for Spanish, and she ended up with German. She had zero desire to take German. Well, once she got in there, I mean, she wasn't going to switch, so she ended up with three years of German and really didn't enjoy it and would really rather have been in Spanish. So if we can open it up a little more, if we have three choices rather than two, kids are more likely to get their choice and to actually be interested, and the exploratory would definitely help. So it's an investment, but it's an investment for good.
If I remember correctly, prior to most of us being on the board, I think, the third language was cut by a previous board because the numbers weren't there to fill the class, or the classes, I should say. So I guess I have a two-part question, or two questions. One, have the current students been, or maybe the prospective students that would be coming up, been surveyed, or their parents, in their interest to see if there would be opening? And it's, it looks like they have been. And second, what would we do if we hire a teacher to teach French, in this case, and the numbers aren't there to justify whatever we hire them as, full-time or halftime or whatever? And alongside that, if we then lose students from the, from Spanish to go into French, and then that cuts that teacher's classes down, what is the plan for those positions in those scenarios?
Mr. Parker, you know, we feel that, you know, the key to any successful program is getting the right person behind the wheel to drive it. And I think what happened before, which is not a reflection on anybody else in the current world language staff, was if you don't have your heart and soul in it, you're not, you're not going to produce, you know, the successful classes in our school, you can correct me if I'm wrong, are the ones that have the teacher that they're all in, and they love what they do, and that radiates across the classroom. We need that person. So that's a huge hire for us. Adding the encore pieces, adding the exploratory pieces will solidify the other languages and the other sections. That piece will solidify that piece. But, so I'm not, I'm not concerned really with the staffing and the takeaway, because what we're trying to do at our middle school is build a foundation for the world languages, French, German, and Spanish, and that's really where the rubber will meet the road the most. And then as we, as we, you know, work our way up and have ourselves in a position at the high school, you know, we'll be jumping into high school now, not everybody, but at a Level 2 and a Level 3, and it'll put our students in a position to take the AP, French AP, and be successful. Not, a lot of our stuff now, a lot of our students who do that are, a lot of it's independent study because we don't have that track, you know, early on. So I think, you know, Mr. Parker, like we do anything, we're going to monitor and adjust. We're not going to, you know, we're not going to, you know, like we do now. If we don't get enough numbers in a particular AP class, we don't run it. But I think getting out of the gate, I would ask the board for a commitment to, you know, with the new person, to really have the opportunity to think outside the box, if you will, do things that are necessary to create that excitement, you know, for that third language, and support that person. You know, I don't really have a, I mean, you need to support them three, four, or five years because you have to build the program. Anytime I was asked to build a program, I wanted five years because I wanted to see my students through. Like, I wanted to start in seventh grade and work that through to 12th grade, and then judge me for how successful or not that program would be. So I really feel it's almost a five-year commitment. We're still thinking about, do we need one French teacher or do we need 1.5? I mean, there's some pieces like that we would have, we would have to weigh in on because we want exploratory, we'd want Level 1 in ninth grade, you know, ninth, 10th option as well, and then the next year, we'd kick to Level 2. So maybe the first hire would be just one teacher, and maybe the second year would be a 0.5, but we want to really garner the board's support upfront before we dive into those weeds too much, too much more along the way. Hopefully that answers your question or half of it.
See, it's a discussion item, but are you looking for action today?
Yeah, that's just what I was going to.
So I was going to ask the same thing.
Well, I. Well, I, here's, and I don't, I don't, if anybody else would like to comment about the discussion piece, then I'll, I'll wrap up my, some of my thoughts then.
I was just gonna say that, for me, the exploratory program is, I think that's very advantageous, and of course, the earlier the kids start, the better. But I, I like too that this would be kind of a building block so that they could come into high school a bit more prepared and understanding of which language they might wish to choose. So, for me, I really, I like the option of adding that piece in rather than just adding a third language at the high school level, but giving the middle school students an opportunity to see, you know, what might they really be wanting to focus on as they move in.
May I add a comment? My grandchildren are attending school in Rockville Center, Long Island, which is nowhere's near here. The point that's relevant is this, they're taking Spanish at exploratory level in first grade. And you and I had a conversation about this. The first decision a kid makes for himself is his language choice. You know, we didn't decide, I didn't decide that I wanted to go to college, I knew, I was a geek before the geeks were, I had a name. I knew I was going to college, but the first real decision I had to make was with language choice, and there was zero prep for it, and I made the wrongest, I made the wrong choice. Your, your child's case is typical. If you guess wrong, and for kids at this age, it's pretty much a guess. If you guess wrong, it has dramatic impact both on college admissions and college graduations. I'm not going through my own story. But I think the exploratory piece is extremely important, what, you know, and should be done whether we add a third language or not, because it is really for many kids the first academic decision they have to make on their own. And just to summarize, I was given a piece of paper with two, two languages on it, Latin, German, Czech one. And I made the wrong choice, and it took four, five years to straighten out the academic mess. So, I think that's, that exploratory piece, I think you're exactly right. That's the direction we need to go in, and we need to go in for the kids' benefit because they need to learn the importance of being bilingual.
What about starting, instead of making a long-term commitment on the unknown, what about starting with an exploratory program, building the interest in the students before committing to a full-time or full-time and a half position for five years? Start with exploratory, see if, then once they're at that age, there's enough interest.
Maybe I'm misunderstanding. Have an exploratory for German and Spanish, and then see if there's interest in French down the road to add a third language?
No, whatever language you're, whatever language you're.
So, have the exploratory for German, Spanish, and French if we choose, that is the third language, but then not have a level one class for a few years?
For the new, for the additional language.
So, then they would do the exploratory, but then not be able to start it the next year?
Well, it depends when you start the exploratory, I guess.
Well, that's what they're talking about, sixth or seventh grade, and so eighth grade is usually when we just, most of the students are allowed to choose first year in eighth grade. So, I guess that would be my question, is are you saying, start somebody with exploratory, but to tell them that you're not going to be able to necessarily take it next year? So, do you really want to do, you know, I guess, I'm confusing the logic behind that.
The point being, or the thought being, without having put a lot of thought into it, just in this discussion right here, to, my, my nervousness, so to speak, is putting such a financial commitment to something that is kind of an unknown, you know, especially because it was ended five years ago or whatever, I don't know how many years now, because of the lack of numbers, but maybe there's other reasons for that. So, is there a way to, to build within the students, hopefully, an interest, and then, you know, see, well, how many are continuing it at such and such grade, and then, okay, well, hey, look at this huge interest, let's add this language? It's, it's just a thought that I haven't processed.
Yeah, okay, I understand what you're saying, it was just like the, yeah, the initial thought without thinking about, okay. I mean, my, my comment to that would be, if you offer an exploratory and you offer a level one so that, say, you know, next year, sixth and seventh grade do exploratory, eighth grade they're starting level one, if no one signs up, then obviously it dwindles and fall away. Based on the 40-some school districts where French is thriving, I'm going to guess that it, it will. I forget how many of the family surveys, it was like 80-some percent said they were interested in taking French or somebody in there taking French. And actually, you're talking about the teacher is really going to be vital for that role. I mean, my thought would be, instead of doing a one and a half, have the person do the level one and exploratory so that they have complete control over that, would be just my thought.
It's, it's a good thought, that, that would be our, our thought too. We, we're not going to find, we need to actually go out and recruit a French teacher who wants to come in and start a new program. I, I mean, we, we really have, I mean, it's a special person, so we really have to, we really have to do our due diligence, due diligence on that, and someone who has, I'm not saying it's someone that's, that's fresh out of college can't do that, but I think if, if we could, if we could, you know, go out and find somebody who's interested in coming our way with that, and, 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 Mr. Lappic, like you said, be part of the, the encore experience, be part of the exploratory experience as well as the level one, that's where I think, Mr. Parker, I was saying about, you know, maybe one will get it out of the gate, but the encore piece is, is huge, the exploratory piece and building that foundation. And we're not going to find, we're not going to find the right person if we're at, at half salary. It's just, we need, we need to attract somebody to come here and, and give them the, the freedom to establish this program and, and build it from the bottom up. So, I, I would think if, if, if we're not going to, if we're not going to go all in on, on one teacher, then we, we can't go in, it just, it just wouldn't, it wouldn't, wouldn't be feasible. So, if I, if I may, just, I, I think what I'd like to see us do is put our third language scenario together with the exploratory piece, and then let Mr. Nestor incorporate that into the budget. And let's, let's see really what it looks like. I think, I think that's, then we can really, we can really see what that looks like, and, and when he, when he gets back to us in January, okay, we'll have an idea what that big scope looks like, and we'll, we'll be able to say that the third language and the exploratory for the third language, exploratory for all three languages and, and the third language, this is the, this is the cost. And then we'll have a better picture of what that means to our, to our overall. And then we can have another discussion then about, do we want to continue? You know, and then that way, that'll allow, allow us to, to start, and if, if we are going to continue that path, to get a commitment from the board to say, okay, we can go out and start looking. You know, if we know that's the direction we want to go in February-ish, then we can say, okay, you know, to say, hey, Bill, get it going so we can get HR on it, and we can start finding the right French person to, to do it. And as well as organizing the rest of our department, as far as the, the exploratory piece, like really, because we have to work with our middle school to get that, to get that incorporated into their master schedule.
Okay, so I'll ask this a different way. Do you need a motion to authorize and direct you to incorporate that piece into the budget so we can evaluate it for decision later?
Just direction.
Okay. I think we can agree, we have consensus to move in that direction for a, looking at it on the budget, budget level, and working out with the staff, see how that would work.
Point of order. What are, what are we actually doing at this point? Is there a motion?
No.
Bill is just, I'm sorry, I don't think you need a formal motion, Bill's simply suggesting as Dave starts to work up his budget numbers, he'll come back, you have a number, and you'll decide what you want to do on that balance between money and that. I don't think you need a formal motion for Dave.
So, the actual...
The only, the only thing we'd say tonight, if there are like seven or eight people were really saying, I don't care what the numbers are, I'm not doing it, well then, we don't need to waste Dave's time, but I, there's clearly at least a willingness or an appetite to at least go to the next step, it seems.
Okay, so, so basically, the actual decision would be made in January?
Somewhere about that.
Somewhere.
Slightly thereafter.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I mean, I guess at the end of the day, you really, really wouldn't make the decision until you hired a teacher. That's the point where you're no return.
We'll close that piece down and move on to personnel.
Can I make a motion to include all personnel, 11.1 through 11.12?
Can, can I suggest that we vote on 11.2 separately because of the significance in the families here? Could we, can I suggest you amend the motion to appoint everything, or to, for us to approve everything except for 11.2?
Call 11.2.
All right, so we have a motion and a second on approving 11-1 and 11-3?
4 through 12.
4 through 12. Okay, all right, I'm looking out.
Who seconded that?
I did.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions from anybody on the board about that motion? Okay, I mean, annoy you a little bit, we're going to go out of order. Would you like to say anything about anybody coming up here?
I, I would. I think, we pulled 11-2.
Yeah.
We pulled 11-2, so we, we're going to go back and do that separately and approve everything else, is that correct?
Only 11-1 through 5 for 2.
Yeah. So, we're going to, we're going to, the motion was to 11-1 through 11-12.
Okay.
Two out.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion, and we'll go ahead and, and if, there's no questions on the motion? We're good to go? All right. All those in favor of the motion as presented, signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lindgren. Our next, our next, as far as staff appointments are concerned, I want, I want to backtrack to 11.1, and Dr. Williams, I know you're in the audience, I know you're hiding in the back, pretty soon you'll be up here at the table, so you won't be able to hide, but stand up if you will, because I, I would, I want to really thank you in public and in person. Dr. Williams has been in the district for over, for over nine years, she's served in multiple areas of the district at, at all levels, and we are just happy, I'm happy to, to, to be someone who has had opportunity to lead her progress forward, if I will, if I may, to say that we're really proud of her, she's going to be the next assistant superintendent for the Norristown School District, she represented us well, she's going to continue to represent herself well, and wish, we wish her all the best. So, congratulations, Dr. Williams.
And I would just like to add that what I was talking before about, you know, the community and how it all works together, it doesn't happen without leadership, student leadership, and the teachers and the, and the parents, the leadership comes from the very top. So, thank you for all the work you've done for this building and for the district over these past several years.
Okay, moving on to 11.2, I ask that you please recommend the professional staff as presented.
We have a motion and a second, are there any questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. So, order without objection.
And if I may, I'd just like to comment again on a familiar hire, Mr. Seiler, Steve. You're hiding behind a CCTV there, that's, you won't be able to do that too much longer. There you go, you move around, you got him. He'll continue to smile over the next couple of months, but we're happy that Mr. Seiler is going to be our, our new principal west, and we're also just pleased to have Mrs. Kohler, who is going to then join the lower staff and guide that, that as well. So, we're really happy that we have a solid group of administrators within our ranks, with Mr. Seiler and Mrs. Kohler, we're happy for Dr. Williams, and last but not least, we're really happy to have a new addition to our administrative staff, Mr. Kevin Kirby, who's going to join us, we'll give away there, stand up for the crowd if you will. Kevin comes from the OJ Roberts School District, over 20 years of middle school experience, variety of levels of administrative experience, acting, acting assistant principal, acting AD, coaching, clubs, you name it, he's done it. So, we're really happy to be able to have him as part of our staff and really add to, to, to the really good things that are happening at our middle school. And Kevin, welcome, you and your family, congratulations. Okay, I'm just leafing through my packet here. Action items for business, 12.1, budget transfers. We ask that the board please accept the budget transfers as presented.
We have a motion and a second to approve the budget transfers, are there any questions, comments, worries, concerns? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no.
Moving on to the audit report, 12...
I'd like to make a motion that we approved 4.2, 2017-18 audit report. Did we ever actually vote on 4.2?
I came back. Okay, all right, sorry about that. Wait. My bad.
Motion and a second. Second.
A motion and a second to approve the audit report for 2017-2018. Are there any questions on the audit report? Any additional questions that we didn't have before? No. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Very well, so order without objection.
Moving on to 12.3, the YMCA rental agreement, we're asking the board to approve the rental agreement as submitted.
We have a motion and a second, does anybody have any questions on the rental agreement before we vote?
Yeah, I'd like to see if we can get a little explanation on this, just so we're all clear.
We contract with the, actually, we don't contract, we allow the YMCA to operate a preschool and after-school program in our elementary school buildings. They've been doing this for probably 10 or 11 years, we had a, another vendor prior to that. They're here from 6:30 in the morning till 9:00, and then 3:30 to 6:00 in the afternoon. It's an option for our community members to, to have daycare for their children until they can, so that they can go to work. So, we've, we've charged them $20 a day per building for, since the inception of the program, we're recommending increasing it by a dollar a day per building.
Thank you for that.
Are there any other questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. So, order without objection, and on to education.
Moving on to action items for education.
I'd like to make a motion for 13 action items under education to approve 13 through 13.4.
We have a motion and a second to approve action items 13.1 through 13.4, conferences, conferences and attendance. Are there any questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. So, order without objection.
Moving on to 13.5, the district calendar, we're asking the board to approve the recommendation to approve the 2019-20 calendar of the Pots Grove School District as submitted.
So moved.
Are there any questions?
Yeah, just one question, if Dr. Shirk, if you can explain to the public how we're going to work the snow days, because it's not going to be listed on the calendar anymore.
We're not going to have any.
Yeah. We're going to, we're going to back, backfill the snow days with our, our ACT 80 days, we're going to turn those particular days and turn those days into student days as needed. So, that's how, that's how, that's how we'll do that.
And we're just going to make sure that the public realizes how, because they're all, guarantee you, we're going to get 1,000 questions of, oh, we didn't have... guarantee you, we're gonna get a thousand questions of, oh, we didn't have snow, when's the snow makeup day?
Right.
Just so we get that out to the public.
Right. Okay, no, I'm sorry, thank you, Bill. One of the things I just wanted to add, that, that this year, we had a calendar committee that we had over thirty-five, over thirty-five community members and administrators that took the time to really dissect last year's calendar, a couple different proposals, and it was really a, a good collaborative effort from our, from our parents, from our PTAs, really from stakeholders, and we, we had an opportunity to put all those ideas on the table, and then we had the opportunity to really go back and put it all together, and reach out again to the committee members via email, and everybody had one really final say as far as what, what, what calendar would best, best suit the district. So really, I think that when you look at a collaborative effort, this is a true example of what, what that effort was, community involvement, stakeholder involvement, and we came up with a, a really, you know, really solid calendar for the nineteen twenty school year, which is hard to believe, a little ways out, but.
And last thing I wanted to say was, we didn't mention it, but it's gonna be final, is graduation will be June tenth, and that will also be the last school day, there will be no change to that as well, correct?
Of the following year.
Of the following year, we're talking two thousand twenty calendar here.
Right. Right.
Only concern I have is no staff in the offices the last day before, the Friday before school opens, Dr. Shirk. Was that considered and discussed? It seems to be a time when there's some last minute changes and anxieties and parents calling, and then we faced that this year, or at least word that I got, it was an issue for some families, that they had no way to get ahold of anybody that last day.
We did discuss it, actually, I discussed it with really the, the entire office staff, the staff, our, our support staff, our secretarial staff, our administrative assistant staff, we're gonna continue to discuss it, pretty much, last minute people are last minute people. So if we did, if we did it on Tuesday, we'd get the same amount of, you know, I'm, I'm not against, I'm not against giving them one more shot, you know, one more day, if you will, but that, that was really, the, the calls that we did receive were, were last minute, were people who were in the system and failed to really do their next part. We really didn't, we didn't have, we, so I, I think, you know, overall, I know with some of our, our changes in the district office, we did an overall better job with getting kids in and making those transitions at the start of the year, better, really better than ever, Mr. Nestor, I mean, I, I mean, we talked about that as well. So it's something we can definitely look at, I'm not, I'm not, but I, I think that the consensus was that the outs, the outliers were the outliers, they're gonna be the outliers on Thursday or Friday, but we'll, I mean, for the good of the cause, we'll look at it. Yep.
I don't see anybody else with fingers poised, I'm assuming there's no other questions? So all those in favor of approving this calendar for the nineteen, twenty year, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say no? Alright, so order without objection.
Okay, moving on to number fourteen, the JOC, we have a report from Mrs. Graham?
Yes, yeah, I have a short report, we just had a meeting, and we had about fifty young women, we hosted, the Western Center hosted the Girls Night Out, and this is an event to promote non-traditional enrollment at programs at the Western Center. All the girls got experiences in every class and received swag bags, and they listened to peers and special guest speakers on how they climbed the ladder in a non-traditional career. We had a Boy Scout merit badge camp, which was to help promote the CTE and showcase the Western Center, primarily it was Upper, Upper Perk, their school district and their Boy Scouts, but we did have some scouts traveled all the way from Virginia, which was really nice to hear. The Western Center awarded grants, funds through the PDE for supplemental equipment, the Western Center will be purchasing equipment for the automotive and metal tech classes. The Western Center also applied for the PDE Competitive Equipment Grant, and we should know by next week if we received it or not. The Western Center would like to purchase a three D anatomy table to be used for five programs, which would include the health sciences, dental assisting, sports medicine, cosmetology, and the EMT program. We did welcome Mr. William Solo as our new automotive instructor, he will begin January seventh, great guy, comes with a ton of experience, really nice to meet him. The Western Center successfully has, has had over twenty, twenty sold-out community dinners, think about that, like, sold out. So I'm gonna tell you to mark your calendars if you'd like to come to the January seventh, and the theme is Italian buffet. So we're moving things along, we did some other discussions on the superintendent record, which we will be doing our reorganization meeting in January, and collectively, the three school districts of the JOC board had decided that we would like to see Pots Grove in the superintendent record seat. So talked to Dr. Shirk, and he basically said, whatever for the kids, we'll do whatever it takes, so we welcome that, and we'll be doing that in January. Any questions?
Moving on to committee items, we're gonna ask that the, the board accept the minutes for the curriculum integration and technology committee meeting that was held on October sixteenth.
We have a motion and a second to accept the minutes from the CIT committee, are there any questions on those minutes? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say no? So order without objection.
Okay, moving on to the policy committee, we are looking at reports, Mr. Parker?
Alright, we looked at a few different policies this last month, the first policy we returned to, we had reviewed previously, policy six in regards to our board meetings themselves, specifically in regards to board members calling in from when they're not physically present. We came up with some preferred wording, and we thought we were gonna move that forward, but Mark and I kinda had a back and forth no passing during the last meeting, and he had some, some good points, so we're gonna go back and review that before putting it to a thirty-day review, so that'll stay on the agenda for now. We, then we had some new policies, well, not new for the district, but new for our discussion, policy eight-ten regarding transportation, this was opened up because of changes in legislation, there were some, some changes made, nothing significant to change anything that we do now, but within that discussion, we talked about a couple other issues that pertain to the policy, one being required training for the bus drivers, the committee questioned what training is currently provided, and we're going to, administration's doing some research in that area, and we'll discuss that further at the next meeting, what should be required of the drivers. Kate and her department have done an excellent job on their own, making sure drivers are trained in certain areas, and we'd kinda like to see that continue in regards to student driver interactions and how to handle different types of behaviors that they might see on the bus. Another issue that was brought up was how the drivers deal with exchange students and letting them on the bus, how that works, so that process is gonna be, or is being reviewed and will be discussed at the next policy meeting. We then looked at policy eight-eighteen, contracted services, again, was opened up due to legislation changes, and again, no significant changes needed to be made, but since the policy was open, we talked about drug testing of the drivers, and we were assured that random checks are done per the CDL procedures. Policy nine-thirteen, relations with non-affiliated school groups, and policy two-twenty-nine, student fundraising, were reviewed together. There's a, a situation that came to our attention regarding solicitor, we have a, the current policy does not allow student contact information to be given out, but it needed some tweaking in regards to it didn't have email on there. So that change was drafted, and I don't think we put that to thirty-day review yet, because we're gonna come back and look at a couple other policies and how they connect with that policy at our next meeting. Seven oh-two, gifts, grants, and donations, as well as three fifty-five crowdfunding, which is a new term for me, but basically, you see a lot with the GoFundMes and this sort of thing, where money is raised, and then the question that the IT department has is, what happens to that equipment that's purchased through that fund, who owns it, who's responsible for it? So we're gonna be looking at those policies based on the administration's recommendations that they bring forth. So in addition to those policies, we're also gonna be looking, not next month, but probably early next year, at our billing policy. Just wanna make sure that we're up to speed, something that the policy committee felt, and the administration felt was important, that we just make sure it's in line with, with what we as a school district wanna see happening. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Moving on to new business?
I have another new business.
Oh, he does? Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay, sometime ago, this is something I, I talked about a while ago, sometime ago there was a hazardous interest, incident in the chemistry laboratory at the high school. The incident sent off an alarm that involved the fire department and lower Pots Grove Fire Marshal. Since that time, I know that the administration and our faculty have been busy making corrections to improve the laboratory safety, and have done some planning on this, and I was wondering if at the next meeting, or sometime soon, the administration could present a report to update us on what has happened to prevent a recurrence, and I know there's been a fair amount of work done, and so I think that would be a reasonable request, and I'd like to have that included.
Yes, Dr. Nip, we'll, we'll have that for, for the next time, thank you.
I, I did hear that the high school band has really had some amazing competitions that they did very well, and so I was gonna ask Dr. Ziegler if he could please stand up and give us a little insight on how well the band's doing.
Yeah, our marching band performed in the Region Two State Championship this past Sunday, they earned third place, which they were very pleased with, they also earned best percussion section and both, best overall effect, so they were pretty excited about that, and it was a big weekend between that and our District One Championship football team, so we were pretty excited about those two things.
Thank you, and just one other thing, is I did go to the Ringing Rocks Halloween Parade because my grandson was in there, and they had over, I think, over fifty middle school band members there, they are growing leaps and bounds, and if you can see these kids, and with the director, they're playing new music, and it's funny, you can see all the kids just interact, and it was just so positive that if you get a chance, you have to come out and see them, because it's just, it just fills your heart seeing the kids having a great time.
Very good.
Okay, I do have something, I wanted to bring up the, the fundraiser that's going on this Friday at the middle school, it was brought to my attention, and in case any of you are unaware, what's happening this Friday is the middle school will be following an Act eighty schedule for classes, then at twelve fifty, they will attend, begin to attend this fall festival, which is a fundraiser for the middle school student government. That's all well and good, except for a few things that were brought to light that I found disturbing, I guess. So how it's gonna work is they're gonna show a movie in the auditorium for all students, but any student who doesn't want to attend the movie must pay five dollars to attend a different activity that they have signed up for within the school. Those students that pay the five dollars, who have the five dollars to pay, will then receive a snack and a drink, students who do not pay five dollars will receive no snack. While it's great for the students to have a break and to have something fun to do, I don't think it's so great for those students who don't have the funds to pay. This isn't an optional thing, this is during the school day, so kids have to be there for school. And then for them to be separated, discriminated against because they don't have the money, to all of us sitting here, five dollars might not be much, it might be what everybody spends on their coffee in the morning, I, I don't know, I don't, I don't spend that, but, but to other families, many families in our district, I mean, we are at about a third free and reduced lunch, and that doesn't count the other families that are living paycheck to paycheck, and don't qualify for those funds, but at the same time, don't have extra money. So to take these children, put them all in an auditorium, to watch a quote crappy movie that was chosen just so students wouldn't want to watch it, and would pay the money to get out of it, that one gets me. It's not a crappy movie, it's a good movie, but it's A Wonderful Life, from nineteen forty-six, it's a black and white. How many middle school students really wanna sit through a black and white movie made in nineteen forty-six? Probably not too many. And if I might add, it's A Wonderful Life is two hours and fifteen minutes, the festival goes for two hours. So are they missing the beginning of the movie? Are they missing the end of the movie? How is this gonna work? And I just don't understand, we are a school that is proud of our diversity, we have every race, religion, socioeconomic level, why would we pinpoint those who are of the lower socioeconomic level and basically punish them by not allowing them to participate in these activities? I don't understand it, I don't know why it's being allowed, I don't understand why anybody thought it was a good idea, because it's not. I have yet to talk to one person about this, and I've talked to people within the district, talked to people outside of the district, and every single person has said, wait, you're punishing the kids who don't have the five dollars? You know, and that's just not right. And then to boot, then they don't get the snack either? I don't understand. I'm off my soapbox.
Ashley, just a question, did you bring this to any of the administration or Mr. Boyer's attention?
This was just brought to light to me recently, it's, it's something that has been very recently planned, it wasn't something that was in the works for months or anything.
Actually, as I say, my twins are in the middle school, and I, I brought this, I understand there's a fundraiser, and they said, yeah, we're gonna be watching a movie, I don't know what the movie is, both of them said they weren't sure what the movie was, but they were told if they wanna do something fun though, they could, and this is the words, if they wanna do something fun, they could pay five dollars to do that. And then I said, well, what about the movie? They said, oh, all my friends are saying that it's a crappy movie, do you know what the movie is? No. Well, how do you know it's crappy? Well, our teacher said that, like, your teacher said? Well, our teacher said, you're probably not gonna like this movie, and I asked my, my son's more aware twin, and she said, yes, she actually said, you're probably not gonna like this movie, I mean, do you know what the movie is? No. So then I explained the, the idea of it's a wonderful life, and they're like, oh, we've seen a lot of themes of that theme, I'm like, yes, because it's a good movie, and they're like, oh, okay, you wanna watch it now. But, but yeah, they were, I mean, just to share, my twins were told that, yeah, you're probably not gonna like the movie, and if you wanna do something fun, you have to pay five dollars, that's how it was worded to them.
I still believe, though, that, that if anybody's out there has problems like this, the administration would definitely have, have looked into it, so there wasn't so much confusion for the kids, and, and I just feel that it should go back to them, and maybe they could figure something out, I mean, if they have a couple days, right?
I found out about this, actually, I found out that they were told they didn't like it this weekend, so I mean, like, just, so since it's today, and Ashley had said that she was gonna mention something, so that's, it wasn't like it was a few weeks ago or something like that, and they didn't even know really what it was until I explained to them what the movie was and everything, so it just seemed very last minute, and.
Well, I think Ashley's point about- Well, I think Ashley's point about maybe what I would consider to be an unintended consequence of a fundraising idea going maybe a little bit awry is well-founded. Obviously, it would never be our intention to have anybody put it at a disadvantage or singled out for any reason unfairly or in a way that would cause any sort of embarrassment. So, I think that we can leave it to your good offices to resolve this issue so that we get rid of that problem and find a way to meet the intent of a fundraiser and fund activities for all the students that are able to participate and find a way to fund for any students that may not have their own available funds. Can I do that with you?
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you.
Just real quick, is it, is there any policy against having fundraisers during the school day? I've never heard of that before, but maybe it's happened and I was just unaware. That was another thing that I was sort of surprised about, that they were actually shortening classes so that students could participate in a fundraiser. I'm not sure about that. That, to me, seemed a little, I don't know.
If I may, I mean, throughout my career, there's been different organizations within schools that have solicited their friends for the good of a cause. This happens to be student council, but there's been American Cancer Society, there's been, I'm trying to think of a couple other things that were, that were specific to spring forward and specific to upper perk, but yes, I mean, there were, yeah, there have been throughout my career, different times and events that would be for the good of the cause, if you will, and that the school would rally around, you know, a girls' club, boys' club, but different, different things that happen in communities, it's always be, be specific. So, yes, it does happen, but it was always in the spirit of. So, no one was ever made to contribute. It was more of a spirit thing, so.
And it sounds like my concern, in addition to the whole $5 discrimination potential, you know, well, I don't have the money, you do type thing. In addition to that, this happening, a fundraiser happening during what should be instructional time is a bit of a concern to me. I mean, we, you know, they do school store in between classes, you do things like that and lunchroom, you can go do this and do that. It is good timing though, in regards to what the policy, we're reviewing at this time, all the fundraising type policies. So, I'm glad you, you know, brought it to our attention for that.
I think what I'm looking at it is, you know, Friday's the last day, then the kids are off all week. So, it's just to me, more I'm hearing, it's just going to be a fun day, exciting day and, you know, because then the next week, they're off for the holiday. That's how I looked at it.
But it's not exciting if you don't have $5 to pay to get out of the movie.
I hope I'm not out of order, but why would anyone pay $5 to watch a movie that you'll probably be able to see a dozen times on television?
No, you get to pay $5 to not watch the movie.
Now I...
It's okay.
You've got to explain that to me in a little more detail.
Our solicitor had some new business he wanted to bring up.
Introduce you to one of my colleagues who's here tonight, Shannon Pierce, who will, you'll see more of her name and she's going to help me a little bit with, so when you see her name on correspondence, you have a face to go with a name and the correspondence will be coming up this week. And Lori says I do this every year. I have no recollection of this. No, I do it at the meeting, but I want to tell you that a letter will be going out in the next few days reminding you about reorganization. And this year's a tad different than last year because we don't have newly elected people. So, the letter you're going to get, you don't have to read it that closely, but it will be different. And just to remind everybody, Ashley is our secretary. We'll call the meeting to order. We'll elect a temporary president. We'll go from there. The letter will explain that. And the other thing, remember, and some of you are new, that we actually have two meetings. We're going to have the reorganization meeting. We'll adjourn that meeting and then you, customarily, meaning Potts Grove, does your business meeting and we all wish each other a nice holiday season. So, that's coming preview for your meeting on December 4th. But I only did the introduction of the meeting. But, and by the way, Lori, hopefully, with her able assistant, me, is working on the agenda.
Two things, if I may. Mrs. Collier, your first assignment is to please get me that recipe for that cinnamon cake from whoever did that. But on a more serious note, I think it behooves us to congratulate also Dr. Jones and it's on your list. I will shut up and...
No, no, I'm not. I will. Thank you. Lisa, I know, there you go, you're in the back too. Come on, Lisa. Anyhow, stand up, please, because again, it's another, it's another highlight for us as a district. We're very, very happy that Lisa defended her dissertation last week. She's now Dr. Jones and, you know, it's an exercise in perseverance and she's persevered over the last five years or so and, you know, she has really worked to be honored to be called Dr. Jones. So, Lisa, I just wanted to recognize you in public for all your great efforts and continue your good work at Rocks. Also, I wanted to bring to your attention, I'm not going to get into a bunch of detail because it is spelled out, but I wanted to, I have an opportunity with Mr. Dorenzo on a weekly and then monthly basis to get a recap on the community relations piece and I wanted to let the board take a look at the co-curricular initiatives that you so graciously funded last year, to have an opportunity to look at the different pieces that those, that new money, if you will, has been put to use in the middle school. So, I just wanted to, things that weren't in existence before, but now are attracting students to be there, you know, before school and after school and really find some interest that specifically are important to our middle school students. I wanted to share that list with you. Obviously, you know, we have, the education foundation continues to move forward. Please take a look at that. The Safe Schools Manual has been, and a guide for our classrooms, has been updated. And I think most important, in the back, the back page, page two, we have, I wanted to show the board all the different pieces of community relations that we have set forward in the last, the last two months. And it gives you Facebook analytics, if you will, when we put things out on the web. It gives you the number of people who it's reached. So, you can, it gives you an opportunity and a flair for what we put out as far as the community relations piece is concerned and how many people are interested in what we're doing. So, also, and also what we've done as far as releases from the district, there's a list of the different pieces there as well along the line. So, I just, I just wanted to give you that particular piece. You can look at that at your leisure. It's in your folder, but I think it's important that you see the advances we've made in the, in that community relations department. It was something that I, you know, obviously, I thought it was a need. I continue to see how it was needed and I know our outreach has, has really continued to be, to be very important. Also, I wanted to share with you that in athletic business, actually Chris Morton should share with me when I was at the tech school, the Potts Grove School District, new turf field made, made the magazine, so I wanted to share that with you as well, that we made that, we made the magazine. You have the Christmas conference, or Christmas concert information in there as well. And last but not least, I wanted to really point a few things out to you that on November 6th, we had active shooter training. We also had active shooter training during our Act 80 day and, you know, before, on December 6th, we've completed five active shooter drills in all of our buildings with our local police departments, with Montgomery County Safe Schools Initiative and it's something that really, you know, I feel that we're in a position, you know, as good a position as you can be. Dr. Harney has organized those events for us, starting last year and some of the things I just want to bullet point there, to share with you, the county has been extremely helpful in accommodating and coordinating the drills with pre and post meetings and very thoughtful responses to the scenarios of the staff. Our staff, for the most part, understands the seriousness of these scenarios and drills. We're attentive and professional. I think for the board, you need, you need to know that they take this very seriously. The three, I think this is the next point, three township police departments are excellent partners and those partnerships should continue to be focal points for us moving forward. The benefits of these relationships have expanded over the last several months and it's something that we're really, really happy to have. Our new radio systems were, are a big part of that transition process to safety. We, through these drills, we also found some, some points of, that we needed to clean up. So, that's, those practice points were good for us. And also, as we continue, we continue to have and continue to, will include our support staff, custodians and grounds because they're key, they're key personnel in these events as well. So, very successful fall as far as these drills are concerned, you know, I think it's important that you, you heard that from us and that we're doing our due diligence in that. So, thank you for listening.
I do have a couple of things I wanted to say. First off, thank you to Mr. Dorenzo for all the work you're doing on the community outreach and everything. I was, I was hopeful that we would see good results from this. I didn't expect anything quite so, so much, so fast, so well done you. You know, yeah, I knew if I kept talking long enough, I'd put my foot in my mouth and there it is. You know, that's, I'm just very, very pleased that it's going as well as it is. So, thank you very much for all your efforts and please keep it up. On a more serious note, on the, on the active shooter training, I don't think any of us who ran for the board, ran for the board with the intention of needing to address active shooter training for our schools, down to our elementary schools. But it's the reality of the world that we live in and we, you know, you could whistle past the graveyard and not do this and ignore it or put in a, you know, go through the motions. But as we say in the military, hope is not a strategy. Okay? You have to plan for the worst. You have to be ready for the worst and you have to have buy-in, you have to have commitment, you have to have an understanding, you have to know how things are going to work and you have to look at your stuff critically, like the radios. When we find something that's not working, you fix it. You address it and you fix it, continuous improvement. So, I would like to thank you, the staff, everybody who's been involved with these and for including the townships and the county for getting this done. It is part of the safe environment, the schools that we want to do. It is not just something that we have on our board and on our mottos and on our strategic plan. It is an attitude, it is a belief and it does color everything that we do. So, thank you to everybody who's participated in that and for making it work.
All right, I have one last piece here. I'm going to reiterate on what Bob said earlier about Mr. Dorenzo. On November 27th, on November 27th, a piece that I think is very important to this district and something that the board is going to be voting on in the future, is going to be rebranding of the district and it's going to be involving a lot of changing how we're going to brand the district as a whole. Dr. Shirkin has already mentioned this and this is very important, I think. Something we have had for the last 50-plus years is a particular Falcon and there's going to be a lot of different pieces that we're going to be looking at in discussing that particular day. Mr. Dorenzo has already spent countless hours in working to create a new possible updated Falcon for our thing, our district and for the branding and for all of our athletics, our curriculums and everything like that. This is not just something to take lightly, as in the piece that we're looking at is probably going to be the pieces that we're going to be putting on all PR and everything for maybe the next 50-plus years, just like the old Falcon has been around since 1955. So, I welcome anybody on the board, anybody that's in the community that would like to come and be part of that discussion. You are more than welcome. It's going to be something I'm going to be very proud to see once it's all said and done.
Okay. Are we all done? All right, if that's, if that's the end of new business, okay. So, now we can open it up to public comment because we have public comment. We did have several items of new business, so is there anybody out there who would like to chat with us about anything that we talked about tonight? Okay. If not, a motion to adjourn would be entertained. We have motion? A second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.